City of Pleasant Ridge City Commission meeting to order. Do we have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a roll call?
Commissioner Budnick?
Here.
Commissioner Lanko?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Schmier?
Here.
Mayor Scott?
Here.
All right, well, we'll open it up to public discussion. Is there... Does the public want to discuss something tonight?
The public.
Oh, you must be tired of seeing me here on the same issue over and over, but I do appreciate, at least in the response from Jim a few minutes ago, I am first pleased with the construction on the Knox facility. I think the construction workers were respectful and they understood the concerns I had about debris and droids, and all, they were quite good. And some of the comments, and I really credit you, Anne, of making the facility look pretty nice, and it looks very nice, they put a lot of money into the place.
Oh, good.
But I sent an email to all of you, I assume that you've gotten it, with pictures, and I'm hopeful, after having a short conversation with one of the owners, and I sent him an email on July 16th, and again, I copied you, and he is committed to being a good neighbor, and I'm taking it as word, and I hope it works out. But I'm going to be adamant, if people park in my parking lot in Ferndale, I will tow them, and I've towed them before, and I am concerned about the safety issues in the alley, and I memorialize those in the email I just sent to you. And I know you, Mayor Scott, said, one of the meetings, that you were... You took your bike and you rode the bike lane all the way down to Detroit, which was great. Have you come to the alley to take a look, to see the problems that I've identified in the email, to see the alley's only 13 feet wide, two cars cannot pass there, there's a blind spot on Oak Ridge with the former Hertz facility, you've got the bike lane coming through there, you've got pedestrians, you've got delivery vehicles that stop, and the driver gets out of the vehicle, and the vehicle blocks the alley and makes the delivery. I'm very concerned that there's going to be an accident here, and I don't know if making the alley one way solves it, I don't know the answer, but I'm concerned. And the other concern, which I've mentioned before, is you have an ordinance that talks about the facility, it's 18.292B, it says that a facility is only allowed in a building that is separated at least 200 feet from any structure that is zoned or used for residential purposes pursuant to the city ordinance. And, you know, Mr. Breckman has advocated that that only means a City of Pleasant Ridge residence and not a Ferndale residence, and thus my comment about being an Orwellian interpretation. But have you looked at the garage located at 10 Woodward Heights? That's in Pleasant Ridge, and it doesn't say a residence, it just says, your ordinance, that any structure that is zoned or used for residential purposes. So, I don't think that the gentleman, Don, who lives there in 10 Woodward Heights, is using his garage as a commercial purpose. So, I'm not trying to make an issue of something, I'm not interested in going to run into court and filing a complaint and getting a preliminary restraining order or trying to do that. I'm trying to make this work for everybody, but I want to highlight some of the very legitimate concerns that I see as it relates to safety and as it relates to the interpretation of the city ordinance. But, my position is, let's see how it works, if it doesn't work, you'll see me back again. So, and I don't know what comments you have about the safety issues, but you are on notice, and it is a potential problem, and I don't know what to do about it, other than making the alley one way and being vigilant in enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments that you people have, or you can't just take my email and love it?
I will say, as somebody that does bike along the paths between Royal Oak and Ferndale...
As I...
Regularly.
As do I.
And using both the east and the west sides of the alleys and the areas on the road designated as bike lanes, it is better. Is it ideal? No, I don't think anyone would say that there isn't room for improvement in different areas, and I think everyone that's worked on the project would say that there are things that we'd like to do differently, but it is, it is better than having no markings or asking people to use sidewalks, all of these sort of things. So, I kind of like the way that it's turned out, although, there's always room for improvement. And I do suggest people to use both the east and the west sides, the west side alleys are a little more, I'll say, more dense, so what I see on the east side through the alleys is actually more comfortable than what I experience on the west side of the alleys running through Ferndale. But, I understand your comments.
But take a look, particularly where the, I think it's photo number three that I attached to my email, as you'll see, there's directions going both ways into the alley, and so, and then you've got my parking lot in Ferndale, and you can't, you can't make the turn if there's another vehicle coming, and I'm concerned about one of my tenants' vehicles being parked there, getting hit. I don't know the answer, other than I think it's unacceptable the way it is right now.
Okay.
So, but let's see, when are they going to open, do you know?
Actually, I don't know. Do you have a...
We don't have a firm date, but it should be soon.
Yeah, I thought they got the approval from the state.
They did, yeah.
And I thought you were the, not you, the city was the issue.
Well, they were the issue.
Oh.
They had a series of issues that they needed to resolve, that they hadn't been built correctly to plan, so now that they have, today, the city engineer inspected the last remaining piece that needed to be corrected on their end, and he signed off on it, so.
One thing, and I compliment you on you, you didn't let them put cement in all of the, I understand it was the city that required them to put the brick pavers in for allow for drainage, which is really great, I mean, that's, that's not a cheap alternative, so... And I think, Anne, you were the one that suggested some of the changes and the cosmetic of the building, and I think it really turned out pretty nice, much better than I expected. And if Roy, Mr. Roy, or whatever his source is, true to his commitment, maybe it'll work out okay, but I'll be there watching. Okay, any, no more questions?
No.
So, you love my emails, huh?
Please keep them coming.
Oh, but believe me, I'm not shy. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, Will, Wessels and Wilk. I concur with Joe on a lot of the issues that he's brought up with you folks. Now, I, I thought that the Hertz was absolutely necessary for them in order to qualify to be, you know, have enough parking and have sufficient in and out to, to the facility. And I thought that's where the major in and out was going to be, was through that Hertz spot, and, and they were going to put up additional signage and everything else so that people would come in and out that way as to take away from the alleys, and I don't see any of that.
What don't you see?
No signage for in and out by the Hertz side, all I see is in the alley where the arrows are coming in and out of, out there.
Well, there are, just to, I did walk by yesterday, I mean, they, and I don't know where they are on all of their signage, but they certainly have arrows in the Hertz parking lot, if you will.
Oh, yeah, in the parking lot, I'm talking about on Woodward, they're supposed to have signage on Woodward showing for, for people to come in and also to go out on Woodward as to not, to take away from that, all the traffic that's going to be accrued over onto the alley, so, to encourage them to come in and out mostly on Woodward. And there's nothing, nothing there, so, no signage, no, no nothing, so, it wouldn't indicate that it's even a part of the Knox thing, other than their paper or their temporary sign that they have up there. So, like I say, I, I remember the meeting, and I remember the layout, and that, that Hertz part was essential for it, and, but I understand that the email you sent says that they have sufficient parking for Pleasant Ridge, and that, that Hertz isn't necessary?
That's correct, they did, they provided their minimum parking requirement on the Pleasant Ridge portion of the site.
But then, that eliminates the in and out.
The, well, it doesn't, because they have cross-access agreements, legal cross-access agreements that have been filed with county, they also have parking restrictions.
What does that mean?
That means that the, you'll always be able to get into the Pleasant Ridge parking portion, even if, in the future, the requirement for them to maintain parking on the Hertz site can be eliminated, but that would require an action of the city commission to move that.
Okay, and then what about, what about their, their entering and leaving through that Hertz area?
Well, that would be, again, that is, that is legally protected right now, that that entrance exists, so, that entrance is there, it exists, and...
I know, but what about...
If action was taken in the future to eliminate the parking, they provide extra parking over and above on the Ferndale site to alleviate concerns about parking generation, if we find that that's not necessary, the city commission could eliminate the parking, but retain the cross-access so that you could continue to get into the Pleasant Ridge parking through the Hertz site.
Okay, but what about the signage and everything, so that it's, you know, more obvious to people that are going by?
I know that they're still working on that south side of the building, what exactly that's going to look like.
You don't know?
I, no, I don't know right now.
Okay, I thought that was already in the planning of everything and stuff, so, I thought that was already provided for, so... So, so you don't know what they're doing?
No, there's no, there's no proposal right now for the south side of the building.
So, they're not required to put anything there?
I don't believe so.
If you go back, I mean, it was told to us that it was going to be essential, and that, that coming in and going out was going to be the Woodward's.
We'll take a look back, and...
Please, and now, all of a sudden, to eliminate that, then, these people are going to be scrambling all over the place to get into their parking lot, they're going to be coming up Oak Ridge, they're going to be coming up Woodward Heights, and they're going to be coming both ways on the alley, so... But I could say, I just thought it was essential, that's what you told us. It was essential to the parking, and then they were going to make it for coming in and going out, so it would, you know, deliberately reduce the traffic on the alley.
And it exists, and it was built that way.
I know it exists, but, but there should be some kind of, you know, knowing that there should be some kind of signage there for people to come in and to leave, you know, from the, from Woodward, and showing that it is a part of Knox, there's nothing showing that it's a part of Knox right now, so, and it was supposed to be, that was a major, major issue as far as signage and everything, so, back when we were planning all of this, so... I would hope that you folks would take a look at that, and, and I think it, and it'll, it'll take care of some of the issues on the alley, because they will be coming in and out, and they'll be, most of them will just park right there, so, but, there's, you know, there should be issues for them to come in and out on the Woodward, you know, on the Woodward side, and that would eliminate a lot of the problems on the, on the alley. Okay?
Yeah, as a general statement, we don't foresee any issue on the alley, we understand that everyone is concerned about traffic flow and the amount of traffic that will exist on the alley, but that's not what any of the information that we have would tell us.
But I mean, if you go, if you go by it now, you, you're going to pass it, and you're going to end up on either Woodward Heights, or you're going to turn early and you're going to go on Oak Ridge, you're going to be going through the alley, that's just what's going to happen, that's the nature, if they don't know that that's a, a way to get into Knox, that driveway there, they're not going to know, so...
Thank you, and by the way, I forgot to ask Joe, could you give your name and address? We know who you are, but...
Joe, do you know who you are?
Both of you, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, John, Will, Wessels and Wilk, 23690 Woodward Avenue.
Joe Papaglia and I own the apartment at 6 Woodward Heights Pleasant Ridge, the apartment at 131 East Oak Ridge in Ferndale, and the house next door at 137 East Oak Ridge in Ferndale.
Thank you, sorry for forgetting to ask.
No, it's okay.
Thank you. All right, any other?
Thank you, guys.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good dream cruise.
More emails to follow.
Okay.
I can count on it.
I'm counting on it, just so you know, I get the same thing.
Thank you. All right, not seeing another public discussion, let's go on to the liaison reports, Commissioner Schmier.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. The historical museum will not be open this month, typically, we would be open Saturday, but in past years, there hasn't been much traffic in the museum because of the dream cruise, so the museum will not be open, but if anyone would like to set up another appointment, you can always reach out to the Historical Commission, to me, or to the Historical Commission directly, historicalcommission@cityofpleasantridge.org. Other than that, 100-year tiles, if you got a letter in the mail, your house is 100 years old, you can order a tile, and also, don't forget, we still have ornaments, someone actually reached out to me last week and bought a couple of ornaments to give as gifts, so, we, Historical Commission has those, so, at any time, if you want a tile, reach out.
A side note, I was last week at the Michigan Association of Mayors workshop in Big Rapids, and they were looking for ideas to engage residents, and they were blown away that there is a building where each house has a file, and people can go see their file, and throw a picture in, and leave artifacts, and they were just like, how do you do that? It's like, well, Warren probably couldn't do that, but when you're under 5,000 people and 1,200 homes or 1,100 homes, it's not impossible.
It's not impossible.
Thank you, Historical Commission.
Yes, and now digital too.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So, if you're about to do a housing project, or you, you have old pictures or pictures of your house, even as it is now?
Just drop them in, become the envy of Michigan mayors. Thank you. All right, Commissioner Budnick?
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so Greg and Shawnee are at the community center for the end of season, all the kids are starting to leave for college and starting school, which is just wild to think about, that we're talking end of the season, so they're wrapping things up, and that's why neither of them are here. We did have, the REC Commission did meet two weeks ago, and a couple notes on that, we had Jane Dixon from McKennaCom to present, which was awesome, she presented a lot of the data that was collected from the pool event, the ice cream event at the pool, and a few others, where she was just giving us the highlights, and a couple things that I think would be interesting to note was Pleasant Ridge scored the best score for park satisfaction that McKenna has ever seen.
Wow.
And so, when we're looking for opportunities, it's, it's kind of tough, it's a great problem to have, that said, there are some ideas, and we talked about a few different iterations of what, the REC Commission did, about what we want to do, what park, the folk, you know, the people of Pleasant Ridge want to see improved or, you know, developed, so, either way, that was pretty, pretty awesome to see, and more to come on that. And Shawnee does want an office for Greg, so that was also part of the... I'll put, put that in there.
Pretty funny.
Are we bumping out the community center for that office?
She's got big ideas.
Going up.
But it was a great, robust discussion, and it reminds me of when I was on the REC Commission, and we went through this 10 years ago, so, I told them to look at the last two Parks and Rec master plans, the one from five years ago and 10 years ago, just to get some ideas and see what's going on, and it's going to be fun, just to see what we end up with. The pool calendar is posted on all the socials and posted at the front doors, so please, you know, just a couple items, teen swim, August 22nd at 8:00 PM, there's an adult swim on August 20th at 8:00 PM, and a reminder, residents will be limited to only six guest passes for Labor Day. Senior trips and movies, activities are gearing back up in September, so please check your emails and the registration software for dates, times, and locations. There's a senior day at the zoo, which is September 11th, and admission is free for that, so take advantage, stop by to see the newest addition of the zoo, which is a baby ape, which is the first to be born in the 96-year zoo history, so go see the baby ape.
That's cool.
We had, to give you some numbers on the swim team, they had 207 swimmers on the swim team, and over 100 different families participate in LIT and summer camp programs, which is incredible. 380 attended the ice cream social, thanks again to Robert Campbell for supplying the ice cream and so many more fun programs. Exercise classes are always ongoing, so check online to see what the latest is for that, for the class sessions, or just drop in, and check out the Huntington Woods Library, it's not just about books, there are myriad things to do there, and I've taken the kids there, it's a cute place, they have a cute little plaything in the back for the kids to mess around with too, and little, little books and toys and stuff like that. They're already working, Shawnee and Greg are working on the October to December ridger, please watch your mailboxes last week of September to anticipate that, and they'll have some, some, or have some indoor and outdoor programs that you'll see in the ridger. I think that wraps it up, and the next recreation meeting will be three months from now. It'll be end of October, October the 30th, and if anyone's interested, the teen council meets that same day at 6:00 PM on the 30th, and then the REC Commission will meet right after at 7 o'clock, so the teen council will be kind of fun, if you wanted to check that out too, anyone curious to see what they're working on?
Cool.
That's it?
It's been a good summer.
It has been.
And it isn't even over yet.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Nice. All right, we will move on to Commissioner Perry.
Thank you, Mayor. The, in July, the Arts Council held a charrette led by landscape designer Ralph Nunez and his team, and it helped gain community input and, on key projects, including entryways to the city, memorial and remembrance ideas for the city, as well as locations for sculptures or art to be placed around Pleasant Ridge. There was a great turnout, lots of great comments and feedback, you know, lots of different, different ideas, and then the Arts Council will meet again on Wednesday, August 21st, at 4:30 right here at City Hall. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, next up, Ferndale Public Schools, I think I'll wait until the government report for that, we have a representative here from Ferndale Schools. And, oh, now, or, why not now? Sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Commissioners, I'm Felicia Wright, I'm the Deputy Superintendent for Ferndale Public Schools, I took a little break, and so I missed a couple of meetings because of the summer work, but now I'm, I'm back on schedule, construction's wrapping up. Some key dates just to share with you, is school begins August 26th, that's the first day back for students, teachers return August 19th, which is Monday. Our next board meeting is August the 19th at 7:00 PM in our new home at Roosevelt, now I have to call it Roosevelt, I can't call it Lower, I have to call it Roosevelt until we officially get a name. This Tuesday, August the 20th, we have a back-to-school fair scheduled from 4 until 7:00 PM on the Ferndale High School football field and track, really hoping representation is there, the intent of the fair is to really just provide an opportunity for community to get in the mindset of the new school year, and to fellowship, and just have a lot of fun, right, and we're also giving away school supplies and backpacks to students.
Nice.
And then this Saturday, big day, school beautification day, so, so hopefully it doesn't rain, if it rains, our makeup day is the following Saturday, the 24th, and that's from 9:00 AM until noon, we're asking if you have a rake, you have a shovel, you have a weed whacker, come out and help us clean up the school campuses for the first day of school.
What time does the beautification, did you say that already, sorry?
Yes, yes, 9:00 AM until noon.
9:00 to noon, awesome, okay.
Light refreshments, maybe that's the enticer, and that's it.
I'll also mention, for parents that are still, that still have the Remind app, that has just switched to the new app.
Yep, the new app is called Aptig, and actually, it's a lot of PD around, a lot of professional development around the new app, but we have opportunities for a phone number for parents to be able to call, or a link on our website if you're having trouble downloading it and linking it, but it will be the communication tool that parents and teachers will stay connected on this school year.
That's great.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least, Commissioner Lanko?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Light update on the Planning Commission and DDA, so the makeup meeting for the last meeting that was canceled is going to be August 26th, Monday, August 26th at 7:00 in these chambers, followed by an October 6th workshop, so, we're going to learn the results, it sounds like REC Commission got like a prelim look, but from all the survey results, from the community survey, the ice cream social event, and the information gathering, and then another workshop in October, so, I encourage anybody who's interested to come out on August 26th at 7:00 PM, thank you.
All right, we will move on to governmental reports.
Good evening, everybody. Very short presentation tonight, our officers have been holding crime at bay, really have nothing to report, so it's just the usual stuff of lock your doors, we have gun locks available at the front desk of the police department if anybody needs any, and we've had the old medication drop-off available for a number of years, but that's now located in our front lobby, so hopefully that'll remind people that it's available, we just don't take needles and liquids, so it's just pills, throw them into a Ziploc bag, drop them off, and we will dispose of those for you safely, so, that's all I have, unless you have any questions or anything I can help you with.
That's pretty light.
Very light, very light, things have been going well.
That's awesome.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda, may I have a motion?
Mayor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Second.
Any conversation? All right, we'll take a vote.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanko?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. And now we'll move on to sewer rehabilitation.
Yes, indeed. We bid out our annual sewer maintenance project, we've been doing sewer lining work for close to 10 years now, as we go through and clean and televise and inspect our sewers, we then also prioritize repairs to be made. Sewer lining involves, it's, it is what it sounds like, they put a liner on the inside of the sewer, and it prolongs the life of the sewer greatly, basically like having a brand-new sewer inside the existing one, so it's a very cost-effective way of maintaining our sewer system. This year, the low bid for the project was to Inland Waters Pollution Control Incorporated with a bid of $111,000, the sewers on Elm Park Avenue, Kenburne, and Maplefield are proposed for this year's work, there's a map in your packet, and so the engineer is recommending we award the project to Inland Waters for that amount of $111,000.
And we've used them before for other things?
We have, yes, there's, there's, you know, a small group of contractors who do this kind of work, and we have worked with Inland Waters in the past.
Okay, any questions for Jim?
Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. So, the sections that are being repaired, like, is the rest of the street, has it all been considered as part of this project and just those sections need to be repaired, or it's chunked out less than a full street length?
That's correct, the, the engineers go and they review the camera footage from when they inspect the sewers, and just identify the sections or the segments that have defects or issues that need to be repaired using this process, so the remainder of the sewers in fine shape, and it doesn't need to be lined.
Like, so, all of Maplefield, just the one section?
Just the one section that's on the map, it's, I think it's a fairly short section, it's only... It's only about six houses long.
Then there are a couple on Elm Park and a couple Avenue.
Yes.
And what?
And a small section on Kenburne.
Kenburne, great, thank you.
Yeah, so on Elm Park, it kind of goes from Chris's house over to Oak Hill. Everything seems to happen around your house.
Yeah.
Fancy.
Great, thank you.
We don't want to go back there. All right, I think we're, well, maybe we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to award the bid for the 2024 sewer lining contract to Inland Waters Pollution Control, Inc., for the total amount of $111,000.
Second. Maybe we take a vote?
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanko?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. And now on to the joint ceiling bid award.
Yes, this is another project that we bid out, as you know, many of our streets have been, well, all of our streets have been rebuilt, and now we're getting to the point where Maplefield and Amherst and Cambridge, it's been nearly 30 years, so they're still, fortunately, in very good shape for being older streets, but there are most recent streets that were rebuilt were Norwich and Hanover, concrete streets, and those were from 2017 or '18, so we're getting close to 10 years on those as well. Joint and crack ceiling is something that can prolong the life of concrete streets, it's where all the joints are in the street, there's that little black strip of, of sort of rubber that's put in there, this project will go and it removes... This project will go and it removes, um, any of the old that's left over, and a lot of cases on some streets, it's gone or just wears over the years. So that can allow water and things to get into the cracks and can start to degrade the pavement quality, so this project would redo that joint ceiling, uh, for the entire city over the course of four years. So you can see, uh, there's a proposed phasing, the first phase for twenty-twenty-four would be, uh, sixty-one thousand, and then it's around forty-six or forty-seven thousand dollars annually each year in the coming years. Um, and this is just preventative maintenance, so do a little bit of work now to save problems in the future. And also, if there's any cracks that have formed, we, we've been doing the, um, um, uh, spray patch.
Yes.
But this can also handle any of those smaller cracks that have formed in the street, actually just fill it with this rubber material that forms a, a barrier for that as well, stops further degradation. So, um, it's good practice, and, uh, there's a, a map showing the work areas for each year in the packet. The low bid was Michigan Joint Ceiling for a total amount of two hundred and two thousand dollars, or two hundred and two thousand fifty-one dollars, with that cost being spread over the course of four years in four phases.
Thank you. Any questions for Jim?
I just, uh, want to reiterate, so the cost is over four years, we're not going to next year come back and renegotiate the cost of any of this, this is the set cost for years?
Yes.
Okay, may we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to award the bid for the joint ceiling contract to Michigan Joint Ceiling, Inc., for the total amount of two hundred and two thousand, two hundred and two thousand and fifty-one dollars.
It's hard to say, isn't it?
It is.
It's a hard number to say.
Two oh two zero five one, second.
That's easier to say.
Yeah, that's how I say numbers. It's easier.
All right, uh, may we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. Wow, we're up to the city manager's report.
All right, uh, Kensington, it's going great. So the water main is nearly all in the ground, save for one segment, uh, that goes underneath Main Street. So they're going to have to dig up Main Street, so we'll have some more traffic issues, because the water main that they have to, you know, obviously you connect to a water main on each end of the street, and the water main is right underneath the middle of Main Street, so they have to dig there to connect the new water main.
In the middle.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Right.
Uh-huh, so.
They couldn't, anyway.
So we'll be doing that after Dream Cruise.
Good.
Yeah.
Are they going to have to shut down all of, it's down to one lane essentially?
Uh, it'll be, yeah, it'll be fairly, yep.
Probably one lane again?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just when you thought you were done.
Nope.
Yeah.
I knew it was too nice.
One lane or Woodward right on?
Yes.
Ten mile.
It's not easy.
Right.
Right, it's a sharp turn.
But then it's hard to get onto six ninety-six westbound. Okay, great.
Okay.
Yay.
More good news?
How long, sorry, not to interrupt, how long do we think it's going to take for them to dig up and then at least get it, I mean, are we looking at a week, two weeks, do you have a timeframe?
At least a few weeks.
What?
Yeah, four weeks probably.
A few weeks?
A few weeks.
Okay.
Four is always what I hear.
I, hopefully less than that, so, yep, so get ready for that, but then we'll be done. So that, but other than that, the project's going very well, so I don't know if you've been over there to see, it's very kind of neat how they, they do this with directional drilling. Uh, it, it really minimizes the disruption. Um, and so the next phase of that street will be starting to put in the service leads, the lateral leads that go to each house, so, um, that will be beginning, um, probably in about a week and a half when they start that work, so, um, it's coming along, coming along quickly.
Yeah, it's not terribly invasive.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of arthroscopic surgery, yeah, other than Main Street, I know.
The residents have been very happy with, uh, the, working with the team too, they said they've been very polite and cleaned up after themselves really nicely, so.
Yes, DeAngelo has a very good reputation, and we know this because they did a bunch of the service line replacements, they've done all the service line replacements for us that we've done, nothing but good feedback about them and their crews, so.
That's cool.
Yes, there's nothing better than getting a good contractor on board.
Yeah.
Makes your life so much easier. Um, speaking of good contractors, Davy, uh, has begun their tree work for this budget year, so letters have gone out to anyone who's having a tree removed, uh, that work should start next week. Uh, they've also started doing their elevating and canopy thinning work, uh, I believe they were on Kenburne yesterday, um, they'll be doing Kensington, uh, Amherst, Devonshire, Wellesley, uh, those will be coming, although Kensington, we're holding off until after the, um, water main project is done. And then the, uh, D P W building, I don't know if you've had a chance to go down there and peek in the windows, but that's coming along as well, so that's looking very nice, very happy with that progress, and we have a very good contractor on that job as well, so.
Is there going to be a grand opening?
Um, I don't know, none planned, it's a, is a, is a, I don't know, we haven't, haven't even gotten there. I think the grand opening will be parking the truck inside and moving all the stuff back in. We can probably get you through for a tour though.
Nice.
Yeah.
All right.
What streets did you say Davy is going to work on this year, sorry?
Uh, they're finishing up the east side streets that they didn't get last year, so Amherst, Devonshire, Wellesley, Kensington. Um, last year they did Woodward Heights through Maywood. And now we had it on Kenburne for the, um, west side.
And for Kensington, you said?
Wait, no, hang, oh, I'm sorry, I think that plan changed. Amherst, Devonshire, Wellesley are next year. Kensington is, Kensington, Kenburne, Woodside, Poplar are this year.
And for Kensington, I know you said we're going to wait a bit until the lead service lines are going to start near the end of August, right? Is that the plan?
Yes.
And at that point, I know we're going to lose some trees on Kensington, so is that when they're?
Possibly, but yes.
So are they?
That will be the time when trees would have to be removed as part of that lateral service line work.
Right, so are they going to start putting in the lines and remove the trees as necessary, or are we going to preemptively, how does that work?
No, only as necessary.
Okay.
The issue becomes, if they're doing a new service line, if they're replacing a lead service line, they can kind of change the location. The issue is if a stop box is located where a tree is, and if they have to dig at the sidewalk and can't move, so if somebody has a copper private side service line, that's not moving, so they have to dig and build the new public side service line to meet up with where that copper service line is, and sometimes that's underneath a tree.
Okay.
So that'll be the instance, the most likely instance where we have to remove trees. So we're hoping we have to remove zero.
Okay.
So.
So it's a wait and see until they actually get in there and?
Yes, because there's so many unknowns with what the service line materials are, and, you know, if those locations can be moved or not.
Okay.
So, but that's why we're waiting to do any tree work on Kensington until that's all done.
Okay, got it. Great, thank you.
Yes, and Amherst, Devonshire, Wellesley, those will be elevated next year.
Okay.
Great.
Any questions?
Quick clarification on next year, like, is there like a forecast as, I mean, it'll be done before this time next year, or?
No, it's next budget year, so anytime after.
So between January and June, like, do they typically do it in like Q one, Q two, like?
Well, no, they're doing, so when I say next year, it's next budget year. So this, this budget year, the elevations are Poplar, Woodside, Kenburne, and Kensington. So then, next budget year after July one, twenty-twenty-five.
Got it, okay.
So Davy was able to do, typically Davy's done their elevating and canopy thinning work in the winter, um, this year they had availability on their schedule, so they're getting it done now. Typically, we've done that in the winter, so it would probably, it could be winter twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah, okay.
So it could be a year and change from now, but we'll just, you know, see what their availability and scheduling is like next year.
Thanks.
So, I know Tim and Bill are going around and trying to, you know, put Band-Aids on some of the lowest hanging trees on the east side streets that remain. We're on a, we're, we're, our goal is to get on a, uh, seven-year cycle for tree trimming. Right now we'll be on an eight-year cycle, so, but that's pretty standard best practice for.
Great.
How often you get around and trim trees. And the first time, the first cycle we went through was really triage, because the trees hadn't been comprehensively elevated in, in quite some time. So now we're going through and actually doing more than just elevating up the bottom end or canopy thinning, which is better for the tree, it helps promote the health of the tree, and longer term, it maintains them in a state that, you know, keeps them from hanging too low or causing issues, so we're doing that this time around, and that's a, a big cost this time around, because it costs more to do that, especially when it hasn't been done in the past, so we've been, we've been working through it.
And a side note, the plantings on Woodward look great.
Oh, amazing.
We were a little concerned about the trees, but I think they came back.
Yeah, so we're fertilizing those in addition to them being irrigated, so Davy's going out and giving them treatments to help get them settled. And, uh, yeah, I, it's, the plants are starting to actually fill in a little bit now and bloom up, so yeah.
It looks very nice.
Yeah, that's great.
Next year it should be really good.
And I do think it has that, um, it, it feels like it's impacting, uh, the, uh, the speed of the traffic and things like that, like people feel differently right there as they're driving, not quite as aggressively, and, um, the, the road diet and the visuals, I think, make a difference.
Yeah.
It's fun to walk on those or ride bikes.
Exactly what we knew would happen.
Cool.
I know, it's been proven.
All right, um, any other business?
Mayor?
He said it first.
For Jim, any news on Woodward Heights, speaking of traffic calming? I know last time we spoke.
Yes, I just thought about that today, thank you.
Yeah, just curious if you, if they've heard anything.
I feel like I'm adrift at sea on this one. I just, it's a hostage situation, no, no further news.
Okay.
Continuous calls, emails, badgering, and...
Can we give the work to the, I mean, because we did an R F P., right, and we awarded it to the best?
If there was another bidder. There was, we received one response.
So there's no alternative?
There's no alternative. Nobody does this kind of work around here, other than P K. Contracting. And the problem is, the problem, this is a problem we run into, is that P K. Contracting is a subcontractor on almost every project they do. M dot, I mean, the reason is they're, M dot, they do all the striping work for M dot, all the striping work for Oakland County, Macomb County, Wayne County, local governments, and they are the subcontractor on all those, so their scheduling department is horrible because I think it's one guy, because they don't run projects, they don't lead projects, they just, they get called in by the prime contractor for all the contracts, and then they show up and do their thing. Getting submittals took seven or eight months, just for the, the shop drawings for the specified materials. So that's the problem is, that we run into, and I don't, there's been a number of people from P K. Contracting who have left and started their own shop, and they all seem to last three or four years and then disappear. So I don't know, you know, what the case is, but that is the problem we have here, is there is no other contractor. We would have, I would have been here four months ago saying, let's go to our next alternative, there, there's nobody.
Quick follow-up to that, um, I remember last fall, they were ready to do the work, but we kind of tapped the brakes because of the grimy roads and not good, like?
Yeah, they were never.
If we run into this situation, that, like, if they say we're ready to roll November twenty-second, like?
They were never ready to do the work last fall.
No?
No. But, yeah, this year, if they say, if they come out and they say it's November twenty-second and we're going to do the work, I'm going to say, great, let's, let's.
So, but, less than ideal, because it's warranted, right? So if, if it comes unstuck, they need to come out and fix it.
Yeah, it's great getting them out to try to get a warranty claim too, I'm sure. But yeah, let's just get it in the ground. Yep. Yep. So frustrating. You know what I said about good contractors before?
I had to bring it back down to reality.
This is the yang to the yin there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Oh, Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank, uh, Jessica Wright, um, for, there was a very cool event in Pleasant Ridge last weekend that we had also, that was the second annual porch sessions in Pleasant Ridge, and, you know, we had, um, eight different, uh, host homes and twenty different bands just performing front porch concerts all day on Saturday, just sort of, it was an unofficial event, it was not sponsored by the city, it was just something that she put together, like, working with the community, and it worked out great. It was, um, you know, truly unique, because every, every homeowner and band and everybody made it their own. And also, a big thank you to Stephen and Victoria Plain, who hosted and helped drive the fundraiser for Ferndale High School Marching Band, and we were able to raise over seventeen hundred dollars. And also, thank you to John Cethel, who has Powder Blue, who's in the Fields Art Studio Building, who had a really lovely gathering to sort of celebrate all the bands and homeowners and everything afterwards. And it, you know, everyone, I think, just, it was just, everyone was very nice and happy, and we had beautiful weather, so thank you, Jessica Wright, and, and her, um, her family and crew who put it all together.
It was a great afternoon. Very talented bands.
It was, it was a great day, so it's fun, and so she wants to figure out how to do it even more and gently next year too.
Louder, gentler nation.
Yeah.